Good evening. Welcome to the work session for Greeley Evidence. District Six, Board of Education. And we'll call this meeting to order is the 28th of August 2023. Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll for us, please?
Director Bentley.
Present.
Director Campos Spitsi.
Present.
Director Mash. Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood. Director Pappas.
Present.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
Five board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. First on our agenda is the calendar review, meeting engagement. So you will see your calendar there. Just to point out a few things. We have the Casby Legislative Tour tomorrow at 2:00. We have a board visit on the 7th, school visit in Maplewood. Another board meeting on the 11th. Board visit to Wintergrad on the 12th. We have convocation at Greeley West on the 25th. And board visit or board meeting on the 25th and board visit on the 28th at Jefferson High School. That gets us through the next month. Is there a no, there's something, Dream Team Breakfast that's also on our calendars?
There's a couple of these things that are really critical, President Matthews. And we've not gotten response from all board members. So we really do need to know who's attending tomorrow at the CTE Center. And then we will need to know regarding the convocation as well. The other things are...
Which two, sorry?
Tomorrow's CTE visit with Casby. So if I can just confirm with each of you if you're planning to be there.
Yeah, I'll be there.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
I will be there.
Ms. Sullivan?
I will not be there.
And then what other one?
And then the convocation on September 25th. It's Monday, the 25th at 7:30 in the morning. And it'll go until about 10:30.
Are we there, Tish?
Yeah, I should be. I think I did maybe, but I'll head except...
Yes. Let me double check at work on that one.
We have a little bit of time on that. I just need to know in the next week or so, this week would be great. And we'll need to check with Mr. Norwood and Ms. Mash. She is a... Well, we know Ms. Mash is coming tomorrow. So she helped organize it. And Mr. Norwood was a question mark.
You said the convocation is 7:30 to 10:30?
Yeah, roughly, yes.
Okay.
Roughly being getting out of there and people walking out and cars leaving.
How many people are we expecting for convocation?
I would say 2,500-ish.
2,500-ish, yeah. So getting out of Greeley West.
Maybe a little more.
2,500 people getting out of Greeley West.
We are planning to run transportation from our other sites to the buildings. So not all staff will need to drive, but it'll still be, it'll be very busy. It's a big number of folks.
Anything else on our, on our calendar? That Dream Team Breakfast is the 7th, I think.
It is the 7th.
Is it not on here?
It is not. I'll make sure that it's on everybody's calendars.
Yeah, an invite went out to the boarding. It's just not on here.
It's just not on this one, yeah.
There's also a District Six Business Partnership Appreciation Breakfast on Friday. I can't every click it.
And we responded to that as well, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Anything else on the calendar? All right, we'll move right along to exploring the early college academy. And Dr. Belch, I'll give it to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. As we were planning for tonight's business meeting where you will receive an Innovation 2030 update related to early college academy and the work that has occurred at early college academy and the data therein, we realized that I don't think any of, none of you were on the board when we adopted early college academy. Terry came on the board that first year that we implemented. But I think it's been a long time since we've really talked about truly what is an early college academy high school? What does it mean to be an early college academy student? How is that a little different from being a traditional high school student? And how's that different from being an Ames Community College student? And so I asked Dr. Dattery to work with Ms. Silva to prepare a presentation for you. We wanted Dr. Dattery to do this, although she doesn't any longer oversee early college academy and Mr. Osmus does. Stacy was the lead administrator at the time of implementation and design on the school and supervised it until this past year. So with that, I'll pass it to Dr. Dattery and Ms. Kim Soba.
Thank you so much. This, it is, just it truly is a pleasure to be able to come and visit with you about this school, which when Dr. Belch asked me and Kim to do this, I was like, oh my goodness, yes, absolutely, let's talk about this. So I went back and looked at some of the, you know, what we did and how did we come to be with this model at this time and in District Six? Because there's not very many in...
Good evening. Welcome to the work session for Greeley evidence. District six, Board of Education. And we call this meeting to order. It is the 28th of August 2023. Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll for us, please?
Director Bentley.
Present.
Director Campos Pitsi.
Present.
Director Mash. Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood. Director Pappas.
Present.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
Five board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. First on our agenda is the calendar review. Meeting engagement, so you will see your your calendar there. Just to point out a few things. We have the Casby legislative tour tomorrow at 2 o'clock. We have a board visit on the 7th. School visit Maplewood. Another board meeting on the 11th. Board visit to Winograd on the 12th. We have convocation at Greeley West on the 25th. And board board visit or board meeting on the 25th and board visit on the 28th at Jefferson High School. That gets us through the next month. Is there a no, there's something Dream Team Breakfast that's also on our calendars?
There's a couple of these things that are really critical, President Matthews. And we've not gotten response from all board members. So we really do need to know who's attending tomorrow at the CTE Center. And then we will need to know regarding the convocation as well. The other things are.
Which two, sorry?
Tomorrow CTE visit with Casby. So if I can just confirm with each of you if you're planning to be there.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
I will be there.
Ms. Sullivan?
I will not be there.
And then what other one?
And then the convocation on September 25th. It's Monday, the 25th at 7:30 in the morning. And it'll go until about 10:30.
Are we there, Tish?
Yeah, I should be. I think I did maybe, but I'll head except.
Okay.
Yes, let me double check at work on that one.
We have a little bit of time on that. I just need to know in the next week or so, this week would be great. And we'll need to check with Mr. Norwood and Ms. Mash. She is a, well, we know Ms. Mash is coming tomorrow. So she helped organize it. And Mr. Norwood was a question mark.
You said the convocation is 7:30 to 10:30?
Yeah, roughly, yes. Roughly being getting out of there and people, people walking out and cars leaving.
How many people are we expecting for convocation?
I would say 2,500-ish.
2,500-ish, yeah. So getting out of Greeley West.
Maybe a little more.
2,500 people getting out of Greeley West.
We are planning to run transportation from our other sites.
Oh, okay.
To the buildings, so not all staff will need to drive. But it'll still be, it'll be very busy. It's a big number of folks.
Anything else on our, on our calendar? That Dream Team Breakfast is the 7th, I think.
It is the 7th.
Is it not on here?
It is not. I'll make sure that it's on everybody's calendars.
Yeah, an invite went out to the boarding. It's just not on here.
It's just not on this one, yeah.
There's also a District Six Business Partnership Appreciation Breakfast on Friday.
And we responded to that as well, right?
Yeah.
Anything else on the calendar? All right, we'll move right along to exploring the early college academy. And Dr. Pilch, I'll give it to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. As we were planning for tonight's business meeting where you will receive an Innovation 2030 update related to early college academy and the work that that has occurred at early college academy and the data therein, we realized that I don't think any of, none of you were on the board when we adopted early college academy. Terry came on the board that first year that we implemented. But I think it's been a long time since we've really talked about truly what is an early college academy high school? What does it mean to be an early college academy student? How is that a little different from being a traditional high school student? And how's that different from being an Ames Community College student? And so I asked Dr. Dattery to to work with Ms. Silva to prepare a presentation for you. We wanted Dr. Dattery to do this, although she doesn't any longer oversee early college academy. And Mr. Osmus does. Stacy was the the lead administrator at the time of implementation and design on the school and supervised it until this past year. So with that, I'll pass it to Dr. Dattery and Ms. Kim Soba.
Thank you so much. This, it is, just it truly is a pleasure to be able to come and visit with you about this school, which when Dr. Pilch asked me and Kim myself and came to do this, I was like, oh, my goodness, yes, absolutely. Let's talk about this. So went back and looked at some of the, you know, what what we did. And how did we come to be with this model at this time and in District Six? Because there's not very many in the state of Colorado, let alone in the nation. So I'm going to introduce to you a few folks here in just a minute that are instrumental in this work. But first, I want to just kind of talk with you a little bit about, well, what is an early college high school? We know we have early college academy. We're very proud of it, but you might just think, well, it's just like something we do. Well, actually, this is a model that nationwide, there are only about 400 of them. And think about that in comparison that there are 23,500 secondary or high schools in the nation. But there are only 400 of these early college high schools, what we call District Six Early College Academy. And so what it is, of course, is it provides the opportunity for our, for students anywhere, right, to earn a high school diploma and up to two years of transferable college credit. And it is tuition free because they're earning that credit, right, while they were less than high school. It's a rigorous framework, all college aligned. So any college or early college high school is going to be those college level courses taken while kids are in high school. So it's not, it's not something that we rewrite curriculum. It is college level curriculum. It's just given at high school. In this case, it is a strong, you have to have a strong partnership with a higher education entity. For us, that was Ames Community College. At the time, it was brought from, actually, this whole idea was brought to us from our Ames Community College partners. They came to us and said, this is something we've been looking at. This is something we think we would like to be a part of. We think our community would benefit. And talked to our then superintendent. And the two boards got together and talked it through. And the then, which is a different CEO of mine, and our former superintendent said, yes, let's do this. When we opened, because it took a couple of years of planning. And then when we opened, Dr. Pilch was our first, was our superintendent. And they actually also had a new Ames CEO. So it was, it was really fun for for us to all of them in areas together. Somebody who's been with us pretty much from the beginning is Mr. Char, Dr. Richard. Dr. Richard?
Almost.
Yes, almost. I was going to say, I thought so. And he is the executive director of high school programs. We had another gal start out, but Ray quickly joined our team and was over there and working alongside us. And he has just kind of always been with us at ECA and ensuring that our students are being successful. So couldn't do this without Ray, honestly. It's just a really amazing opportunity and partnership. Alongside Ray is Mindy Marshall, who has recently become our assistant director at the school. She really oversees a lot, has seen overseeing all of that academic advising. But now she's doing that in kind of a larger role. As we continue to increase our enrollment, we're seeing there's a greater need for making sure that our kids are staying on track, being successful, what are those classes that they need to take, and really balancing all of that. And so Mindy has been instrumental. If you come to our graduations, you know, the kids just adore her as well and really appreciate and on her to help them to be, you know, get across that finish line. So we're happy and congratulations on your recent promotion. And then our newest member, so good to have you on board, Dr. Rosa Law. She is the new director of ECA. Again, Ray, I'm just going to give you kudos. Because of the partnership and just this ongoing, constant conversation and communication, again, knowing that we're increasing enrollment, seeing that over time, as, as he's been a part of this, really seeing one assistant director wasn't enough. We really needed a director and an assistant director. And that is all on the Ames, you know, side. It's not what we pay for. That is what they do because they know that these students are also their students. And, you know, that success is important. So just welcome you, Dr. Rosa Law, into this, our ECA family. And really appreciate you being careful with this. So I don't just wax on with this partnership that we have with Ames. And truly, we're truly very fortunate. And our kids are, and we'll be able to show to you tonight, not only in the work session, but really even more so in the business meeting, the data that supports how beneficial this is for our students and continues to be. So with that, the other part of this and just kind of that, what is an early college high school kind of concept? It's really student-centered learning with high student support. And you're going to see here in a minute what we mean by that. Because these are college level courses that our kids are taking, making sure that there is that supportive place for them. And then for us, it really meant being a school of innovation. So within the state of Colorado, that is something that we could apply for. We're going to talk about what that means. You know what the concept of school of innovation is. But we're going to talk about what those waivers are here in just a minute. In fact, there is the next slide. So when we started the school, we knew that there were a few things that we needed to do differently, in large part because we were blending a District Six high school with our community college. And knowing that we needed to offer those classes that just, this wasn't a comprehensive school, a high school. This wasn't anything typical. We knew we needed to be able to be more flexible with some things than maybe a traditional school setting would be. So these, there were three main waivers that we needed to apply for. We were actually the very first school here in District Six to apply for a, in a school of innovation with the state of Colorado from our district. So the first one is the staff salary schedule. So our District Six staff members, and I'll show you, share with you in just a minute here who they are, are all on what we call the APT. You probably heard of that many a times, the APT schedule and have that contract. That stands for Administrative Professional Technical. So they are all on that rather than the teacher contract salary, right? So that's, that's a big change and that's a big difference. We also require so that it is commensurate with what our Ames faculty has, is a master's degree. It is required that they have that, and that was all written into our school of innovation. The second one is really having flexibility in the calendar and schedule. Now, our calendar over time has really evolved to where it's much more similar than it was in its beginning years with the calendar that all of our District Six students have. But if we need to, and we did in the beginning need to, have a little different calendar, we have that flexibility. Because again, our kids also are amenable to what's in the Ames schedule in their calendar year. And then the day schedule, within the day, is definitely different from our comprehensive high schools. They have a very different schedule within that. So that was all in the innovation. And then finally, just around curriculum and academic expectations. Because we do blend that, the academic expectations into one coherent unit within the day and within the year-long expectations that students take, we knew we needed to have a waiver in place around the curriculum so that we could really make sure that our kids are having that full college experience and that we were not requiring classes of students that every other high school might experience. Rather, we needed to have some flexibility in that. It's all worked well. And we've actually never, you know, those are good, good waivers that have served us well in our, in our school. So as we talked, there's, and I think you're aware, right, that we have not just District Six staff, but we also have Ames faculty. We have more Ames faculty than we do District Six staff. But we do have seven teachers. Two are math, two are English Language Arts, and two are science. Because they get the majority of those credits that they need with us in those, with those teachers. I did not say social studies. I'll get to social studies. Actually, Kim will kind of share with you a little more on social studies when we show you kind of what is the day in the life of a freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior at ECA. And then we also have one special ed teacher. Because, you know, our caseload, we have a number of students who are also, are students with disabilities. And so they access ECA, but we do have supports in place for them and accommodations. We also have a counselor, a social worker. We have student service providers, just like all our schools, we're on gifted and talented, right? Dream team, different things like that. Oh, like speech-language psychologists who should, if a student need that. So any of those kinds of services that a student needs, we provide that. And then we also have two office staff members, custodial support and a kitchen, kitchen folks. And then Kim, you did not say assistant principal, because again, that is what our Ames faculty really helped to provide in their leadership. So we just fund for a principal. So those, that is funded out of our District Six dollars, okay? What is funded from Ames in terms of their faculty breakdown are all of these things. So there's 21 Ames instructors. Seven also are full-time, like our seven full-time teachers. But they have an additional 12 adjunct instructors, because there's just like maybe a class here or there that kids need to take. So they, they get all of those folks. And that's in large part what Ray and now Dr. Law will be doing in hiring and making sure that all of those classes are fully stacked. When we talked about the academic support earlier, when we started this, we knew that these are college-level courses and kids start taking those in as freshmen. That's not typical. We knew that we needed to have that high academic support in place so that they can be successful. And so from the very beginning, we said, we will need tutors and Ames will, they put that bill, they provide those tutors, and we have five academic tutors that are available for kids. It's a beautiful thing. It looks very much like a college campus and the way kids access that support. They very much advocate for themselves. It's pretty cool to watch. We also have two part-time seminar instructors. Again, seminar is something we started right out of the gate with. We said, this is different and kids need to learn how to be a college student as well as a high school kid. And so that seminar is really, that's what it's designed to do, is to help support kids with being a college student. And then we have an instructional librarian that is actually a new position that has been funded in the last couple of years. And that's really to help support professors and teachers with providing, you know, with instructional materials, things like that. So that's very nice and Ames provides that. We have an academic advisor. Again, that's a new person. Mindy used to sit in that seat, but now has moved to assistant director, and now we have a director. So you can see just a great deal of support, really on both sides, certainly for Ames. I'm going to turn it over to Kim, and she's going to talk, like I said, about kind of that day in the life of kids and how do they walk through ECA. It's important to note, this is not a comprehensive high school. If our students want a comprehensive experience, it's wonderful. It just means they need to go to a comprehensive high school. But if they want to take advantage of this opportunity, this is a beautiful experience for them, so. Kim?
Okay, so I'm going to talk just a little bit about our academic programming. The first slide that is, I'm going to show is our ninth and 10th grade programming. And then the next slide that I show will be the 11th and 12th grade programming. You'll see this slide at the board meeting as well, but we'll just kind of do a quicker overview of it. We'll go a little deeper here. The courses that are not in bold are District Six courses and where they are only earning high school credit. And then the classes that are in bold are college classes where they earn both high school credit and District Six credit, credit towards graduation. The students are taking a combination of high school courses and college courses in ninth and 10th grade as well, not just in 11th and 12th grade. And we really believe that helps build a really strong foundation before moving on to exclusively taking college courses, most of them their 11th grade year, but all of them for sure their 12th grade year.
If I, Ms. Lemon, to just jump in here. What's important to note is that in order for students to get an AA degree, they need to have 60 credits from Ames to graduate with an AA degree. District Six, 22 credits. So our kids, that's when she said, those bolded classes, they get not only their college credit, but they also get high school credit for those classes. And all of kids do. Like if just a student from another high school was to take a class at Ames, they get not only the college credit as well as the high school credit. So that's how you meld that. But that's why you're going to see so many of these classes being in bold and why it takes more faculty members, right, in order to achieve that 60 credits for our students.
Our master's schedule is, we have seven periods in our day, and we do meet five days a week for all of our classes. So our program, though, for high school, they'll earn seven high school credits in each of their freshman and sophomore years. And while simultaneously earning between nine and 13 credits in, for college in their, their classes, their freshman sophomore years. So we do continue to evaluate our course sequence to make sure it's best needing the needs of our kids. And we've made some slight adjustments in the last couple of years. For example, this, this last year, we added a class called Advanced Academic Achievement. It's AAA 109 is, is what the class is. And this course would typically, you could think of it as like a college success class to help ninth graders learn what it means to be a successful college student. And it has really been helpful for our students. We also made a change this year to physical education. Our 10th graders, starting this year, they're taking a fitness concepts and a fitness circuit trading class. Those are two one-credit hour courses within one semester. And each one of those credit hours, well, those classes will take about nine weeks. So they'll take the first class for nine weeks and then they'll take the second class for the second nine weeks. That change allows us to differentiate between PE, let's take it in the ninth grade. It's a different course for 10th grade. And so our students are really enjoying that opportunity. So that's our ninth and 10th grade course sequence. And then our.
These classes are decelerated.
Some of them are decelerated, yeah. So we, we have decelerated several classes.
You need to explain what that means, yeah.
Okay, so several classes are decelerated and several classes are not. So for example, American Government is a decelerated class. It's their, it's a college class. The social studies courses are taught by Ames Community College instructors. And so social, for our social sciences, American Government is a freshman class, and it is decelerated, which means the course is taught over two semesters instead of one. So it allows some additional time and support for those classes that's needed. He does a lot of support and scaffolding for our students as that is, you know, one of their first big classes that they take that is a college class. And we've also decelerated AAA 109, that college success class, so that we can add a lot of additional support in there. And, but music is not. Yeah, music is just a semester-long class. In our sophomore year, we, it depends on the math course where they come in. A student will come in where, it depends, coming in from middle school. A student may be ready for geometry or may be ready for algebra two. I think we have a student even taking a more advanced class than that this year. That's a freshman. And so that part depends, it depends on that. But our college math classes are all semester-long classes. And our Spanish one class is decelerated. It's a five-credit hour class that's offered at the sophomore level, and that's a decelerated class. But the rest of the Spanish classes that they take at ECA are not decelerated. So I believe, and then US History is a decelerated class. There's a lot of reading and academic vocabulary in that class, and that class is decelerated. So, and then we don't have any other classes, I believe, that are decelerated.
You see more of that at the ninth and 10th grade as kids are entering in, making sure that you're successful.
Government, US History, Spanish one, and AAA 109. I'm looking at my, my friends in the back to make sure I get it right. Okay, so that's ninth and 10th grade. As we move into 11th grade, most of our juniors and all of our seniors are enrolled in a full college course load. And that, the only thing that is really depends on is that math class. So if a student comes in taking Algebra I, then they'll take Algebra I, then Geometry, then Algebra II, and then a college-level course each semester of their senior year. Many of our students are in advanced math, so they'll start with whatever that advanced math is and then take a course sequence after that within math on our campus. Students do work with their advisor to tailor their junior and senior year electives course to ensure they're enrolled in courses that are offered at ECA, but that best support their post-secondary plan. Like, for example, students that are interested in studying business are encouraged to take both economics courses at ECA. As seen on the previous slide, the classes up here that are in bold are college classes in the, where they are earning both high school and college credit, whereas the classes that are not in bold are just District Six credit, which is generally, generally just Algebra II, junior and senior year. So that's our course programming. One, one thing we thought it would be, that might be helpful, is, is to talk a little bit about some policies. So early college academy is a District Six high school, and our students abide by District Six policies. And in addition, because we partner with Ames Community College, our students are Ames Community College students as well. And so we abide by Ames policies as well. Our students are held to Ames Academic Standing Policy. So students who achieve less than a 2.0 cumulative GPA will be placed on academic probation as a warning that their academic progress is unsatisfactory. And students on academic probation status who do not demonstrate improvement in the following semesters may be placed on, on suspension. So we have a lot of supports in place to help that from happening. But they, they are, they do have a college transcript. So those measures are put in place to also protect that college transcript. In addition, when a student does not follow the Ames Code of Conduct, they were, they are referred to the Dean of Students' Office at Ames for some potential sanctions. And so we just work really collaboratively with Ames in regards to student conduct.
Luckily, we don't have lots, but we've had a few, and we have to work together on those.
We wanted to know internships. So ECA students have participated in District Six Career Exploration Internships Program each summer since, since the beginning. each summer since, since the beginning. And we're delighted to share that this summer, we had 17 students participate in internships across Greeley Evans Community. This is the most students that we've ever had in one summer, so it's pretty exciting. One of our students tonight is going to talk a little bit about that in the board meeting. She's going to highlight that. Overwhelmingly, our students have shared that they've had great, great experiences and tremendous professional experience. And we've just noted some of the places where they, they had internships this past year from our school. Transportation is, has been a challenge for many of our families at ECA. So we've definitely lost some students the few weeks leading up to school and several families have reached out to us with some concerns. And just being able to sustain enrollment at ECA because transportation was challenging for their family. We're excited to say that just today, day one, we, District 6 transportation, we've been working with the transportation department, providing some, some busing for students to, to ECA. So this is, this is day one. So we're working through some of those kinks. But a survey went out to families a couple of weeks ago and some families that were interested in, in trying some transportation from the district based on their needs in the morning, were able to, to utilize some centralized pickup and drop-off locations in our Greeley Evans community. Those were existing routes that EC students are joining. And so they're, they're being bussed to Tewentown and then they're getting onto a single bus from various routes and then coming to ECA. So the bus showed up today and they were excited about it. And so we're just still working with our families as to where the, you know, was this the best stop, bus stop for you or not? Or is this taking less time or not less time? So we'll work through some of those kinks, but our families are really grateful for the opportunity.
It's important to note, and I don't think I said, or we didn't say, that it's a fully open enrollment school. So they could be all over it, so the boundary, so it's just transportation, while it's a challenge, and we're pretty lucky that they're working through it.
Yeah. So we're really thankful to Chad Holly and the District 16 for helping us. And they, they did fast. We, we rolled this around like in about a week and a half, so. And our hopes that it's making ECA more accessible to students. And we really believe this is going to have a positive impact on future enrollment. And we'll just, we'll just get down to it. We're also very fortunate to have support of Greeley Evans Transit. Many of our students ride the city bus. So we're really thankful for that partnership in our district as well, for our students. Athletics, we get asked a lot about athletics, so we wanted to put this on here. So one of the questions we often get is can students participate in athletics? We don't have an athletics program at ECA, but many of our students do, they do participate at area schools in our community. In order to accommodate that, that's why we have a different bell schedule. So our students start 15 minutes early and get out 15 minutes early as well, so that they can get to area schools for, for practice. So far this fall, we're, we're doing a lot better job of keeping track of this data because this number keeps growing. So we have 20 so far this, this fall season that are participating in various sports, boys soccer, cross-country cheer, golf, football, softball, and volleyball, pretty much all of them. I'll be busy going around to all these different schools, trying to watch some, watch some of our students because they get excited when we come and, and get to watch them. Last year, all three seasons combined, we had about 50 student athletes, which is a lot. That's a lot.
Kim, what determines which school they just stayed at?
So we're working really closely with Bob Billings and now Chris Klein, who's actually in our building today, working with us. So they, they participate in area schools, so not all schools or not all students are participating in Central West or Northridge, but by and large majority of them do. They, the preferences that they participate in, they're bound, wherever their home school would be, if they were to attend their home school, that's, that's where it would be. There's, there's a lot of rules within Chassa that if once you choose a school, though, you stay at that school without a bond, if I move, then there, you know, there's some potential, they have to sit, sit out for a period of time or just play JV, some sanctions there. So that's how, we work really closely with the district athletic director on that because it's complicated with our students participating all over our community. But that, but that's an exciting thing. Our students are really enjoying athletics.
So when we don't have them, they do get to participate, which is often a question that we ask from the very beginning. It's a big part of the kids' experience at high school.
When we have our open enrollment nights, that, that is a popular room where we bring the district athletic director. Can we do this? Yes, you can. So student clubs, just like other high schools, we offer a variety of student clubs for students. Some students participate in sports where others will participate in student clubs. From the very beginning, these clubs have been funded through student fees at Ames. There are many other clubs, there are many clubs that we have. We're anticipating around 20 clubs this year. We haven't started yet. They start, I think, is it tomorrow?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. They start soon. They're getting ready to have some of their early meetings. So they start next week. We have chess club and NHS, student council and an art club. We have electronics club. We have all sorts of different clubs that are students there, that our students would like to be a part of, they're student-led clubs. We do have, yearbook is offered as a class this year. So all the comprehensive schools have yearbook as a class and, which will be helpful because it's, it's hard to get a complete yearbook done in a club after school. So that's offering some support from Justin's in order for, for that to happen. In addition to student clubs, it's important for me to note that some of the same experiences at the comprehensive schools, we, they have, we also have to build community. We have, we have a fall dance and a talent show and we even have a prom at ECA. So they enjoy.
We don't have homecoming. We don't have fun. We have prom.
Yeah, so one of the most recent changes we have made in addition to our Student Support Center, or is the addition of our Student Support Center. So this place allows us to bring a, various student support service providers together in one space. So students can just kind of walk in and if they need help, there is somebody there that can help them with whatever that need is. It provides time for, a space for students to work with tutors, to work in study groups. And thanks to our partnership with Ames, we're excited to share, in like two weeks, I'd have different pictures that we will have brand-new fancy furniture in our Student Support Center. Thank you, Mr. Char. We'll have brand-new furniture in there that is like very much a college feel. Not only in our Student Support Center, in our lobby. Our students love the space. They say it's a little like a dentist's office, though, so they're really excited about us adding some fancy stuff there. While I'm talking about new and fancy things, thanks to bond dollars, we have new flooring and paint in our cafeteria slash gym. It's both. But we have brand-new shiny flooring. We had carpet before in our cafeteria and gym. And now we have some really nice new flooring and new paint and, and it is, it is wonderful.
So this building that we're in is also, just I didn't even talk about that and how great it is. That is a building that has always been an Ames building, but it wasn't built for ECA. So this cafeteria, you know, gym cafeteria kind of thing, it wasn't a big PD space is what that was, you know, when, when I first came to the district. And so, you know, this building, we've been able to utilize so functionally for our students and really it's, and they've helped us to kind of renovate a few spaces. But we did, with our bond dollars, renovate that space and it's been hugely beneficial because it's not been conducive for lunch or, you know, or-
We've made do.
Fitness. Yeah, you've made do for sure, but we're really grateful to, and the kids love it. They know it's, it's better, so.
And we will be getting some new paint and flooring throughout other spaces in our building in the near future. So I mean, I, I think just in closing here, as, as Early College, as an Early College High School, we provide students with a college-like experience that allows them to get their AA degree while they're still in high school. And we know that this is a life-changing opportunity for many of our students and their families and, and we're just really honored to be a part of their journey.
We could share more, but we'll save it for the business meeting. This is kind of like, how this has come to be, and I hope it just kind of gives you a little bit of a window into, it's really something that's a, it's a, it's a hallmark. It is a, not something that you just have in every district. And we're, we really are fortunate for our students to come to this.
I'll just, I'll just add, you've heard a lot about the significant commitment from Ames financially to allow us to do this. So, you know, they have a significant outlay of staff. The facility is owned by Ames. We are responsible, mostly, but Ames has helped us some for upgrades and improvements, which we've been able to do with mill levy override and bond dollars. Initially, Ames was helping to, to supplement the tuition cost for students and also the one-to-one devices cost. A piece of the mill levy override was for District 6 to take on the cost of the one-to-one devices for students and to take on the cost of the tuition, the concurrent enrollment tuition. So, you know, when the model was designed, it wasn't always intended that Ames would have such a significant responsibility to make it, make it go. And so we were fortunate that our, our community came alongside us and helped us to pass and renew the mill levy override, which allows us really to maintain this program, which is, you know, significant as students are earning a lot of college credit coming out of this campus to, to finish that associative arts degree.
Should we ask our questions now or at the?
Sure.
I would say just, we want to be, we're bumping up against time for us. So if you, unless you need to ask it now, I think, I think the business meeting's a better place.
I think if it's, I think if it's a programming question, though, it might be more appropriate here.
Okay, sure.
I'll just ask one of them. So how, I think your graduating class is about 60 students, is that right?
It, it's different from year to year. Our senior class is 76 students this year. We had 70-
Two, two last year?
Okay. So last year, I think, was the largest graduating class and this year we will exceed that.
And is that like kind of capacity for you guys or?
You know, we-
We start with, and-
I do think this, and this is a good question from the board meeting.
It is a great question, actually. So I just want to say, because it's, she's done a phenomenal job of keeping our kids, the staff, with Kim's leadership. We really wanted to run about 100 to 115 students at each grade level. And the key is, we need to keep them. We don't want a lot of attrition. And that's why we talk about all the supports. As we were getting up and up going in those early years, some kids said, this isn't for me and I, I can't do this. So that's one. So okay, they might go and find another opportunity. That's fine, but that's Kim's and team, but under Kim's leadership, I will say, has done a much better job of being able to keep students, as you've seen. The other thing that we have to keep in mind is, kids do move. And we don't take kids past their sophomore year. We cannot get them up and in those credits and make that same promise at, once they become juniors and seniors. So sometimes you will see that dwindle as well in those upper years because simply students are moving in. And there is, we do have a considerable amount of mobility, so within just the greater Greeley Evans School District. So that is a factor as well. But you're seeing those numbers increase in those senior years and seeing more and more students because of the work of the staff and leadership in keeping students at, at ECA. We, I will also say that beautiful new building we built called Greeley West High School really has enticed a lot of kids. And we saw a dip last year and then you'll see this year, it's really kind of come back up. But a point of kids think they need to go to Greeley West. So we'll get them back and keep, keep going up in our enrollment, but that's certainly another factor to be solved. Not too, not to worry.
Staff will tell you they're full.
Yes.
They would like, they would like more space and more of a building. They will tell you they're full.
Dylan would tell you that as well.
They do tell us that. They actually not, they do tell us that. They will tell you, they do tell us that.
So what is the capacity of their building?
Well, we have 322 students right now. It's tight. And we could go a little bit higher for sure and maintain. We think we could go a little bit higher.
Actual capacity would tell you around 400.
Right.
Knowing that some students will take classes at Ames when you get to that, right? So they're not always all in that building in their junior and senior year. So that's always-
I think every classroom is used every period, about one, right now.
Including this year.
Including this year.
Right.
The second semester is not quite, not quite there because of early grads and some students that are taking a, an additional class that they need to support a dip, another class. So a little more flexibility second semester, but it's, it's a little tight. It's great.
Lots of kids.
We love it.
This was really helpful.
Yeah, it really is.
Thank you.
Good to get an overview. We've been there so many times and seen it so often, but yeah, just to have it broken out like this is very helpful. Thank you.
Thanks to the Ames folks for being here for this. I'm the leader of the meeting, I presume.
Yep. They would be here.
Next, we have our debrief of the work session. And so, Dr. Professor Spitsi?
Thank you for letting me ask that one more question. But yes, I have not been to the Early College Academy ever. I know you just said you've been there a bunch of times, but because I'm new on the board, so that was super informative. I, all those facts about it being one of only 400 schools with this model, pretty cool. And I do remember being impressed at graduation at how many of those kids are going to college. It was by, by far the most number of kids out of any of our high schools percentage-wise who will be going to universities. So it makes me pretty excited, but yeah, thank you, guys.
Yeah, a lot of the same. Just a lot, a lot of fun stuff coming from the calendar. And then First Call Academy is something we definitely should be proud of. I really just like looking at that 100% graduation rate. It's fun to, fun to see, so. Yep. Ms. Sullivan?
Yeah, I actually, I really enjoyed that presentation. It's probably needed to have a lot more of that information and I will hold off on the rest of my questions until tonight.
Ms. Bettes?
Same, thank you.
Yeah. Thanks for having me. Early College Academy, they do such a, you guys really do such a great job and they're, they have our, pretty much year-after-year highest test scores at the high school level. So very proud of what you guys do there. That's, that's all that we have and our work session is adjourned.